I'd like to call the Clay Township Board a trustees meeting to order because Hunter's ready. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal, here. Crystal Regan.
Here.
Tom Kruger.
Absolute excuse.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Okay. Next moving right along, we have bills payable. Entertaining motion to pay the bills payable?
I'll make a motion to pay the bills payable in the amount of $22,757.59.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any questions on any of the items?
I guess I can take this up at a later date with Cindy on what nickel and sap.
I can tell you there are general liability and our bonds.
Okay.
So I believe on here, yep, this was the elected official bonds that we had to pay. It is larger than normal because they gave us a discounted rate of, I think, they discounted the bill $900 to prepay for the four years.
I see last month was 47?
That was, yep, that was the second installment for our general liability.
Okay.
Yeah, if we paid in advance four years, what was it?
It was about $900 cheaper.
$900 cheaper just to pay the four years. And we are required to have it, so.
Understand. Thank you. Okay. Quick explanation on interstate billing services?
Yep, that is the rental for the backhoe when our backhoe was in getting repaired, getting the new bucket put on. We had to rent one, so the insurance company will be covering that along with the repair of the backhoe.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Insurance was gonna, that will be a wash. So, okay, any more?
That was the one that was involved in the accident.
Right.
So the other party is responsible for it, right?
Ultimately, yes.
Yeah, our insurance company might go after, I don't know how that's where.
Meaning it's a subrogation?
Yeah. Right. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We did have a little change of our format of the meetings. In the past, we used to have public comments on anything on the agenda in the beginning. Then at the end of the meeting, just general public comments. But right now, what we're doing is the general public comments on anything you want, anything on the agenda or off the agenda in the beginning of the meeting, and that's where we're at now. So do we have any public comments? Come up and state your name and address and...
Hello, my name is Alice Shaborski. I live at 773 North Channel Drive on Harson's Island. And I see that Mr. Pratt is up for recontract, and this is what my issue is about. And I have only one word to say, and that is Monroe on Harson's Island. We have a problem with trailers on vacant lots. We have a, it's like a free-for-all there. New people come into the neighborhood and think they can do what they want. There's a couple trailers. One is a new one, but it's said nothing can be done because it's grandfathered. It's a new trailer. I don't understand how that can be grandfathered. And the other one, there's a lot further down the street that has multiple trailers. There were 14 cars parked there at that one lot. They have parties. It's, I don't know what can be done. I am here to just bring up the subject. Maybe the code enforcer needs more hours? Maybe he needs an assistant? But nothing seems to be helping us with our situation there. I've talked to you, Artie, a couple times about this. I've talked to Mr. Pratt here about five times about this whole thing. It's devaluing our property is what it is. Even parks, or trailer parks, or campground parks have order, the rules that they work by. So many cars per lot. This one with 14 cars parked there, I mean, how can you have that in the neighborhood? So I just wanted to bring this up. After 2:00 on Thursday when Mr. Pratt is through, there's nobody that we can call. There's nobody that can address our problems in what is happening in the neighborhood. So if we can come to some kind of conclusion, we would appreciate it. I know there's been many complaints. I can name seven people that have complained a couple of times. Even one of these forms, they've filled out these forms. I've filled out these forms. I don't know where we go from here. So whatever you can do, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I am actually also working on that little swing in the orchid.
That is another issue.
I know, I'm working on it. I almost had that resolved, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I'll expect to hear from you then.
That's right, I know. You bet. Any other public comments? Hearing none. Moving right along to the consent agenda. Entertaining motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of November 21st, 2016, and synopses, the check reports. There is no communication, no notices. There is a request for the assessor certification and association dues for both Sherri Lawton and Barb Schutt in the amount of $500 total. And just a note on the check reports, that check number, find it now, 27892 is a void.
Support.
All right, we have motion and support. Any discussion? I just want to bring out real quick on any of the training that Barb Schutt receives. She's also the assessor at Contra Ville, so we have a policy where we'll pay for it and they reimburse us for half. So that saves us a little bit of money. I just want to bring that to your attention. So, hearing no more, no more discussion. All in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right. Time for the world famous supervisors' report. Actually, I'm very excited. Received some news about 4:00 today. We had a preliminary meeting with our auditors. Our auditors are going to be here to do a formal presentation at our next board meeting. But as everyone may or may not know, you know, we had some, oh, accounting weaknesses in the township, and there was about a dozen, 12 to 14 of them, and they go back to the mid-'80s, the same ones. And when we had a few difficulties a couple years ago, I pledged that we were going to take care of every single one, and with the hard work of Cindy, and I'm going to give the old board some credit too, because we made some tough decisions, and the department heads and our staff. This used to be four or five pages long. I got our weakness report. Nothing. No weaknesses in our internal audit. And there's a lot of people that said, didn't think it was possible to do, but we got her done. And I'm very proud of that fact. So everyone needs a pat themselves on the back. That's a huge, huge thing in my mind. Like I say, these 12 or so weaknesses have gone back, I mean, back far as any audit I could ever see. And they just never were dealt with, but we got them fixed. And not to boot, and not only that, everyone was going to worry about the cost run-up to fix these, and you'll see in our audit report next meeting, and I got some preliminary numbers. Our actual expenses for our front office went down 10% compared to last year. So, other than that, I've been working a lot the past week on our dashboard numbers, and I do have, that is in our discussion later in the, in the meeting, but that was, we had a deadline of December 1st to get that done, and usually it's the treasurer's job to do that, but he was unavailable, so I did it. Mentioned briefly last meeting that firefighters is considering to forming a union. They have their cards signed, and they, they, I had a phone conversation with labor relation boards. They're going to do an election by mail. The ballots are going out December 15th, and they will be counted on January 4th. So between now and December 15th, I don't have a date yet, but I'm going to meet with the fire department and see if we can have it resolved or not that way. Still working on some MERS issue with two of our funds. It's been a big topic in the paper and the news lately. A lot of municipalities are having issues with their, you know, the post-retirement pension and healthcare issues. Excuse me, still fighting my cold. The relamping of the lights on the Colony Tower, the LED, have been completed. They were completed Saturday. We turned them on Saturday night, they looked pretty good. It was, it was pretty bright and really showed the tower off. But then we turned them off, because we have our Christmas lights on now, the reef and everything, reef and everything. And we are going to get a report on how they think that we can get the beacon on the top going, and with their thoughts on that, on some costs and everything. I myself would like to have that on. To me, it kind of lets everyone know we're here, we're open for business, you know, the lights are on, come on in, you know? And it is a very, it's one of our signature landmarks of the township. I'm going to get a quote to have some, an engineer or something, get a price on the structure of that tower, and to see if it needs to be repainted or not, something similar like we do with our water towers and our tanks, just to give us a report where we're standing and if they have any recommendations or not. It might maybe hoover us to do lesser work now or wait. It's been about 20 years, I think, since this has been painted. Do you remember the last time?
No.
No?
I don't think it was that long ago.
No, but 14 years ago? Okay, but just to get a report on, you know, what they think, how we should handle the maintenance of that.
Do we still have the structural engineer report when we did the inspection 14 years ago? I remember that happened.
Yeah, I don't know. I can get some information on that.
Oh, were they? Because last night they weren't, the Christmas lights were on. Okay. Huh. All right.
I just want to mention too that the county usually allows us to sell dog licenses out of our office, and for a couple months, and for some reason, they're not, or we're not selling them this year, they said no. City of Elginak is selling them, so if you need a dog license for Rover, you can go there, or you have to go to the county, and I do believe you can pay it online at the county's website also. But we have had a few people come in here to buy the dog licenses, and unfortunately, we're out of that business. We do have the draft, I'm gonna, I forgot, I was going to email to everybody, wasn't I, for the Parks and Rec plan, the draft? We do have a draft for the Parks and Rec plan, and it's available. It's on our website, and also it can be viewed at the Township Hall, at the library, the Clay Elginak Library, and on the island at Reader's Cove. The planning commission is holding a public hearing on the plan at its regular meeting on January 11th at 7:00 PM here at the Township Hall. So if you want to comment anything on it, that's the place to do it. Or you could send myself an email or a letter, or the people in the planning commission, the building department. Let's see. Donations are being accepted for the Down River Goodfellows at our offices, and I'm sure there's several places around town collecting donations, and also we do have the applications at our office. Let's see. We had this past weekend, the third Christmas in the park next door, and Pearl Beach Lions put it on, and I was there. It was a great event. Every year it's getting better and better. I'm guessing they had at least 200, maybe a few more, or 225 people there, and they gave out free hot dogs and hot chocolate, and we had the sleigh ride around with Santa that the kids enjoyed. And we had the Elginak Choir. I bet you there were 60 kids in the choir, and they sang Christmas carols, and it was a really good event. It's getting bigger and bigger every year. So that was nice. And also this past weekend, Tom Watkins did a photo, Christmas photos through our Parks and Rec here at the hall. They had a nice Christmas scene set up, and for 25 bucks, you could get Christmas pictures taken with your family or pets or whatever. And it was very well received. I think they had almost 20 people take advantage of it. He was very happy. We were very happy, and kicked back $100 into, or just almost $100 into our Parks and Rec fund. So that was a nice event, and I'm sure that will grow every year going forward. Upcoming events, we have, and I misexplained this last meeting, I'm sorry. We have a leisure and activity club starting, it's at the Elginak High School. It's the second Thursday of the month from 6:00 to 10:00. The next one will be December 8th. And what it is, is basically it's games and activities for adults with special needs, 18 and older, and if they have special needs or anything, it's supervised, and we, I'm not sure, I'm going to try and make it this one, but it's explained to me, they have board games and other things, and it's a great social activity. And I think the last one, they had about eight to 10 people there, and we're hoping to grow it more and more. And I just want to mention that, I didn't quite explain it right at our last meeting, and I apologize. Our consumer education series continues the third Wednesday of the month, January 18th. We're not doing it in December because of Christmas. January 18th is in-home care and senior residence scams, and then February 15th, we're having investment frauds, and that's put on by the internal, or the Attorney General's Office. We have a new, basically it's a club, starting as Eat Healthy, Be Active, starts January 7th, 9:30 AM here at the Township Hall. It's going to last for six weeks. It's free, and it's going to be a weekly item. I'll have the flyer, and what day is January 7th on? It's going to be that day.
Saturday.
Is it what?
Saturday.
Saturday. And it's going to be six weeks. It's going to be free. And then also, we're starting the Clay Township Youth Tennis League, ages 5 through 10. Well, basically, it's ages 5, and it goes up to 5th grade. And they're going to be starting January 7th, and, no, I'm sorry. It's going to be January 11th through the 15th. And there's a charge of $75 if you register before December 18th, and it's $95 afterwards. Any information on any of these, you can call Cindy Babish at our office here, and she could help you out. And also, we have a lot of the flyers online on our website. So, sorry for confusing everybody, but lots of good things happen in the township. So, that's my report. Unfinished business, we got the peddler's permit?
Just let's say that.
I don't think it should be on there, should it?
Because this was revamped from December of last year's meeting.
Okay, so we don't have a peddler's permit.
Some new information about the peddlers or something.
Did have somebody called today for one, though.
Did you? Good. If you pedal on anything here, you got to get a permit to go door-to-door. If you see anybody going door-to-door, and they don't have an ID.
Yes, that's why it's on there.
That's why it's on there. They should have an ID, picture ID of Clay Township. Anyone that gets a peddler's permit, we give them an actual picture ID in our logo, and it says Clay Township. And if not, call our dispatch and we'll send somebody out, because we want to do a background check and a few other things before these people come into our neighborhoods and knock on our doors, and, because it could lead to, yeah. We don't want anyone scoping out our neighborhoods for illegal things, activities.
Do you have a qualification for a peddler's permit, the type of services that they provide?
Oh, yeah. Yep. If they're selling food, they have to have a, be okay through the health department. One requirement we do is we have to, they have to give us references of a couple other communities where they also served, and got a peddler's permit, and we call them up, call for references. We've actually gave a peddler's permit to one organization or one group, and we pulled it because things weren't right.
You can see it? It's about a five-page ordinance?
Yeah. All right, moving along. New business. I'm recommending, we need, we have a vacancy at the Board of Reviews.
That's because of?
That's because Sandy's on this board, and we needed an alternate member, and we actually looked at this person, Deborah, a while ago, but she wasn't a full-fledged resident yet of Clay Township, and now she is. And I am recommending her to the board, to this board, to put her on the Board of Review as alternate, and there's a couple letters from her, and I've known her for quite some time, and I think she will be an asset to that board.
Is she here?
No, she's not. But...
In reading over her resume, highly qualified, so therefore I'll make a motion that we appoint Deborah Addy to the Board of Review.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. This is a tough board. I mean, to actually find people, they don't meet for a long time, but then they'll meet, like, in March, they meet for a week and a half, and then again in July, they meet. And if you have a job or something, it's really, I mean, basically, you have to be retired or not working to be on this board, but, so yeah, we have motion and support. Any more discussion?
Do we think that we're going to discuss this any further when there's an open vacancy and this is going to become a permanent ordeal? Are we authorizing that permission today?
Well, she'll be an alternate.
I understand.
Today.
Okay.
If somebody else, if they don't, if there's another vacancy, yeah, it'll come up again.
We actually have to reappoint or appoint probably the next meeting for the Board of Review for next year.
Right.
But first, we're just going to fill the vacancy of an alternate.
Yeah, I'd just like to meet the person.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. Okay, do we have any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. All right, next, but not least, we have Resolution 201641, Opt Out of the Public Act 152, Public Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act. Basically what this is, Act 152 is a state law that basically says all government officials have to pay 20% of the healthcare. It gives us...
Employees.
What's that?
Government employees.
Government employees. What did I say?
Officials.
Oh, I'm sorry. Government employees. And it gives us the option to opt out of it, as we negotiated in all the labor contracts, to actually opt out of it in lieu of increasing their costs, which we'd have to increase pay, that type of a thing. So that's what's before us today.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201641 to opt out of Public Act 152, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act for the calendar year 2017.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Right now, what they do, the families pay $60 a month, and the individuals pay 30. And I know most people do pay more than that for their healthcare. This is something that we worked out in negotiations.
And as you mentioned before, this is what, the third, fourth year running that we've opted out?
Fourth or fifth, yeah. Fourth year. I can't speak to, did you do it the previous board, do you remember? I think this came out in 2012, so.
Back thereabouts, yeah.
Yeah. So it's pretty boilerplate. Most smaller municipalities actually do opt out, and they do the hard cap or something similar to that. Any more discussion? We have motion and support, right? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving right along. James Prot has been our zoning enforcer for six, seven years, five years? Boy, time flies. And one thing that kind of bothered me, we never had an official contract with him. He was hired in, well, it would've been 2011 then, right?
2011.
Yeah. And plus, he's never had a raise that whole time. I wanted to have a contract, just because I think it helps the township out and Mr. Prot. And the whole time, he's been compensated $20 an hour and with no benefits, as you can see, and I wanted to raise him up to $21 an hour. He, this is a tough job. He gets frustrated with it, I get frustrated with it. We can only do so much within the law. It's hard to tell people what they can and can't do with their own private property. We have successes, and sometimes we don't have successes, and we try hard. But he, I think in the past year and a half, he's come a lot further. We gave him some tasks, and he's fulfilled them. Want to get up and say a few things, Jim? I know he wanted to address our, address us a little bit. Did I kind of sum it up?
Yeah. You know, I can't enforce laws that don't exist, and I'm not a response unit, so, you know, we don't have anybody covering the township on the weekend in my capacity, so I'm here every day, Monday through Thursday, call me from 8:00 to 1:00, and I take care of those complaints. And this lady, I've talked to her numerous times about motorhomes, but there's, or the campers, but we don't have anything on the books that prohibits it. Right. I've explained to everybody that Monroe's been a huge problem. I've explained to everybody that Monroe's been a huge problem. I've explained that we're going to try to get something that we can make enforceable, but it has to go through.
Planning.
Planning and all that. And once, you know, there's, if there's nothing there, there's nothing I can enforce. So.
Didn't we, I don't want to get off too much of a tangent, but didn't you bring that up to the planning commission?
Quite a while ago. Yes, I did.
And it never went anywhere.
Never went anywhere.
How a zoning, just so you guys know, how a zoning ordinance works, it's not passed actually by, well, eventually it's passed by our board, but it's initiated with the planning commission and they come up with the ordinance. Then from there, it actually goes to the county planning commission. They approve it or not approve it. And at that point, it comes to this board then. And we can approve it, not approve it, or amend it. And there's been a couple of times that actually our planning commission, you know, passed the zoning ordinance and went to the county. The county didn't like it and they didn't approve it. But we came back, it came back to us and we did approve it and it becomes part of the zoning ordinance. But it is a long process and that's kind of how it works to, to change that. So.
Yeah, it takes a long time to change something. Or when I first started, we wanted to redo the blight ordinance and it, it took a year and a half.
Yeah, which we, we got it through finally.
Yeah. So, it's, you know, government moves slowly because of the, you know, there's laws that everything has to go by procedure and you can't, you can't cut around that.
Right. And you gotta be careful too of unintended consequences when you, you mess with the zoning ordinance is also, so.
And people's rights.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions for Jim while he's on the hot seat?
Yeah, it didn't start off very good, did it?
So.
Question here with this date. What's with this date?
Oh, that's a typo by me. And we did catch that after the fact.
Artie, one thing I was, we talked about mentioning was there's been a rash of people wanting to plant arborvitae's out towards the canals and the seawalls and stuff where it was almost like loads came through the neighborhood, but truckfuls, and they were giving them away. I mean, I was just swamped with those things. And so, we're kind of relooking at through the planning commission. They're going to look at it. Zoning board's going to look at it.
That gentleman addressed our board a while ago about it. And he has been to the planning commission a couple of times.
I encourage people, when they want to do fences or plant bushes and stuff, call first. Don't go by what the neighbor says because we had one, there's one lady that she planted $12,000 worth of bushes and it's clearly in the ordinance that she can't do it. So, it's going to go to court, it looks like. So.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money to.
Yeah.
Throw away if, if that's the way it ends up. So, just call. We have plenty of people that can answer.
Right.
We just got, I got an email and I know the rest of the planning, even though I'm not on planning anymore, about, about that situation from, from our planners.
Right.
So, they're looking into it right away.
Yeah, there's, there's just, the guy that went to the planning, he makes a lot of sense. And, you know, Sid and I have discussed it and it makes sense. And then, you know, there's court decisions that happen all over the state and Sid is, is, he becomes familiarized with these. So, rather than us taking someone to court, learning the hard way that this was just tossed, you know, in, in the middle of the state somewhere, that we just, we have to adopt. You know, we don't want to throw money away. And so, that's, a lot of that happened. So, anything else?
Okay. Any more discussion on this?
We'll have him come here more and more often.
Heck, yeah.
Explained stuff to us.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you. It is a contract. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Krista Regan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yeah.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
And you're going to fix the date.
Yeah, I'll fix the date. Yeah.
Who motioned it?
Who motioned?
Nobody. I don't think we went that far.
I didn't.
My support?
I think I motioned it.
You motioned it, yeah.
Okay, next we have a letter of understanding on the contract for Darryl DePage. We had an issue come up and it really wasn't addressed in the contract. And I was actually thinking about it more yesterday and today. I'm going to recommend to this board that we postpone it. But basically, in a nutshell, it doesn't, it's not addressed in the, in the fire chief's contract. If he can't fill someone's duty shift, he'll work that duty shift and get paid straight time what the duty shift would normally pay. And, but then Cindy and I were talking, we were thinking about, but if he doesn't have his 40 hours in yet and he works it, you know, is, he, a supervisor can work a duty shift and it should just be part of his supervisory bill. But it's over, it's over and above his normal 40 hours. That's what this is intended to be. You know, he'll work, he'll make straight time for that duty shift.
We don't really have, you know, it states for hours worked outside of the schedule as directed by the board. We don't really have a schedule set for him. So, that's just something we need to look at just to tighten it all up. I just think it needs.
I agree with the, I agree with the postponement.
Yeah.
I do too. I have some thing, more things I'd like to know about it.
Right.
Yeah.
We did a lot of those board policies. We may want to look at that, see if any of that applies as well.
Yeah, it just kind of, you know, it came up and Darryl and Cindy were talking about it. They came in my office. I said, well, we need a letter agreement because it doesn't address it in the contract. And then I think we, we need to expand on it and, and nail it down a little more precise. So, have a motion to postpone?
Motion postpone the letter of understanding for Darryl DePage.
Okay, do we have any support?
Support.
Here we have motion and support. Ah, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Cindy wants a new filing cabinet.
I don't want a new filing cabinet, not at this price tag, but we desperately need a new filing cabinet. You know, all of our minute books and resolutions go back forever. And some of our cabinets don't quite close, the latches are broke. So, they don't do a whole lot of good in the event of a fire. They're not closed. So, as old as those cabinets are, do you have any idea, Artie?
Well, yes. Let's see. I came to work here in 2000. Those were all here then. They were here in 86.
Okay. So, they're 40 years old.
They're pre, they're pre-barbed. They are old.
So, a couple of drawers won't close. Like I said, it just doesn't do us a whole lot of good in preserving our historical information that we also at this time do not have electronically. So, it's all the more important that we can safeguard it. So, we looked up a couple of them. They're all pretty much general, generally about the same price. This price does include the shipping and delivery of it. But it is in the amount of $3,129.99. So, I would make a motion to approve the purchase.
For the four drawer.
Of the fireproof cabinet, which is a four drawer lateral from line item 101, 265, 740.
I'll support that. A little bit more insurance for us.
Okay, we have motion and support and we do have plenty in that line item. Any discussion or anything? Any questions?
Is it going to be big enough?
Let's start. It should take care of what we have right now.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't see, I mean, the one we have right now is probably half the size of this. However, there is, there is another old cabinet down the hallway that also has some stuff in it. So, we'll see.
Is there any state statute on what type of cabinets or storage that a township should have?
Secure.
Just, just secure, is all? To secure, take into account scanning and filing in the crowd?
That's what's going to happen eventually. That's our goal to get that going this summer. And we're going to start with minutes, resolutions, that type of thing.
We've discussed that in, in the past, last year.
I'm just thinking off the top of my head, you know, we just hired this intern to work in our, in the, in our front office. And the summer, she, I mean, she wants to work full-time in the summer. Maybe that's a project we could have our intern do. You know, start scanning a lot of these documents and filing and categorizing them.
It's very long and tedious.
Where are you buying this from? Did you know about her?
This is actually through Costco. We recently ordered some shelving from them and a printer that showed up quicker than Jim's coffee. So, they were competitively priced. They did a good job shipping. Everything was shipped very carefully, was packaged very well. I was very impressed.
All right, so we have, do we, yeah, do we have a motion and support to buy the Fire King four drawer lateral insulated fire cabinet, $3,129.99 from Costco? We have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. The next thing, I just want to throw this, and this is interesting. And I do have this posted online. If you go to our website under all documents, it's, it's our dashboard. And this is a requirement that the state makes us do to receive our statutory revenue sharing. And like I say, I was scrambling to get the numbers done. From what you can, I mean, the, the things that we actually have control of is actually either neutral or positive. Like the annual, I'm on the first page of performance dashboard. The annual general fund expenditures per capita went down 10%. The fund balance as percent of annual general fund expenditures went up 16% is on our general fund. Debt burden per capita went down 13%. We, the last two years, we, we've really concentrated on reducing a lot of our debt here at the township. You know, we have a negative that our pension, our OPEB liability has gone up and everybody is fighting that right now. And that is a negative. A large part of that is because they changed the accounting rules on how it's figured out, on how they do the actuaries. Instead of over 10 years, it's now over five years and, and how they do the assumptions. So, everybody's hit with that. Ratio of pensioners to employees, that went up 2%. It's because someone retired. Average age of critical infrastructure, that went up one year because it's a year older. We can't make it younger. Our, sad to say, our, our violent crimes per thousand did go up quite a bit and our property crimes per thousand did go up. Our traffic injuries or fatalities did drop. And acres of parks per thousand did drop. That's because we had a few more people move into the township and our parks stayed the same. But everything else was kind of neutral. If you flip the next page over, Citizens Guide to Local Finances. And basically, this is where our money comes from. There's nice pie charts, breaks down exactly where it comes from and the amount that we received. It's a lot, a lot of pretty good information on this. Flip the next page. This is basically where we spend our money from or on. I don't know if you can really see from TV land or not, but the light blue, the, the big one is for safety or, well, it says health and welfare, but it's police fire. And there's other public works. And there is like garbage. General government is this part right here. But, but it has a good breakdown. Historic trends in our, and this is a general fund. You can see up here, 2012, and it's dropped significantly from 14 and then last year into 15. So, that means we're spending less, less money in the front office here. Flip the next side, it talks about, again, our fund balance. And we have, and the honors are going to tell you next meeting, our township is in excellent shape financially. And our fund balance did actually, did go up this past year. It did drop in 13 and 14, but that's because we retired a lot of debt. We don't make a lot of money or a lot of interest on money that we have sitting in the bank. We make maybe one-third of 1% interest. We don't even, you know, it's almost nonexistent. So, it's foolish for us to pay 5, 6, 7% on debt when we have this money sitting in the bank making nothing. So, we pretty much retired all the debt that we, we could in the past two years. And that, that's why, you know, the, the fund balance dropped a little bit then. And actually, this will actually show the debt, how, the next page, these bar graphs, how it dropped from 2012, 2013, 14, and 15, dropped significantly. It does show our pension funding and our post-retirement healthcare did go up, like I mentioned before. And part of that is, is how they changed the accounting on how they, they determine their actuaries. It's very confusing. And I'm not even going to pretend on how they, they, they actually come up with those numbers. But that's what they do. And the, the last couple pages is our debt service report. These are the outstanding bonds that we do have. There's only two. Last year, I think there was five in this, in this report that, but like I say, we paid them off and got them off the books. We have the, of the refunding of the, the bonds that we did a couple of years ago. If you recall, we had a couple, three outstanding bonds where we were paying between 5 and 7%. And we combined them into one, we refunded them. And we sold the bond on the open market where the advisors advised me that we get about 2 and 1/4% interest. But we are such, we are, Dun &amp; Bradstreet has us at double A plus. And that's the golden standard as far as ratings of D and B. Can't get any better. And we actually sold that bond for 1.87% interest, which is a lot better than paying 5 to 7%. And that fell swoop, we saved over a quarter million dollars. But this is that bond. It goes through 2023. Then you flip the page again, and this is what we have left on paying the expansion of the water plant. And as you can see, that is done in 2020. So, as far as debt that we have going forward, it is reduced considerably. And so, that's, that's just for your benefit. And let's see, what else do we have here? That's where your money comes from. Oh, they make you do a proposed budget. And believe me, this is very loose in general. At the last page, projected budget report. Basically, it has our, this is just our general fund. This is what our budget is. And the numbers going forward as far as increase of property taxes and revenue and increase of expenditures. So. So that's it in a nutshell.
So you said you'd put this online?
Yep, it's online.
People can.
Yep.
Read it in technical?
Right, right. And then I want to give you the work pages, too. I mean, this is all the stuff I had to come up with. It is pretty detailed. And I was kind of, I had a couple nights till here and one in the morning to get it done. But, you know, you might want to just go through there and check out the numbers. And some of it's interesting, some of it will put you to sleep. But it, a lot of it is, not a lot of it, but some of it's kind of guesswork. Like they needed to know how many residents in Clay Township have a bachelor's degree or over. You know, we kind of went off the 2010 census and then adjusted up a little bit and numbers like that. So there is a little bit of guesswork involved, but it's kind of interesting. So I thought I'd put that in the package, too. Any questions on it or, or anything? If you can ask now or ask me later. Graphically, it really tells a good story, you know, with all the graphs and everything.
So you said the money in the general fund was declined, I think you said 2015, 24?
Twenty, twenty, he asked if the, if the fund, the money in the general funds declined. And it did a little bit in 2013 and 14. And that was planned because we retired quite a bit of debt. We didn't require that debt.
The money in the general fund to pay it off.
Right, right. If we didn't require.
Paying off that debt that's arguing with the money back.
Right. If we didn't retire that debt, we would have added money into the general fund those two years. But the board then decided, and I agreed, that we reduce the debt to pay, you know, reduce our costs going forward. And, and like I say, we don't make much money of that, of that sitting in the, in the bank. You know, we have to be very conservatively, conservative, yeah. Investing money legally, we have to and rightly so. My first year, it kind of, it was hard for me, but our job is to provide service and protect the taxpayers' interests and money. It's not to speculate in markets and try to make a couple more percent on the market. It's basically against the law for us. So.
I thought you put the.
Right. Yeah. No, that's what we did. So. And, and we've done some things even this year. We put in a new phone system. For instance, this year, that it's a better phone system. It'll make, it makes our workers very, or more efficient. And, but it reduces our, our monthly bill. What was it from? We're, we're like from three grand to.
A township one?
Yeah.
About eight, nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, we, we save about a thousand bucks a month. And so the whole thing had a, it paid for itself within three years. And but this thousand dollars a month is going to pay, pay us back 10, 12 years, the life of these, of this hardware. And plus, it made us more efficient. So to me, it was a no brainer. So if we spend money, any capital improvements, my feeling is to reduce the cost going forward of doing business. So. All right. Any more discussion on the, on the dashboard or anything? I know it's a lot of information, but you can come back to it. Or if anyone sees anything online, let me know. Board member comments. Mark, you have anything for us?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I think you've addressed the union negotiations with the fire department. That's going to be taking place rather, rather soon, I hope.
Yeah.
And get that put to bed somehow. So that's about it. Need some help with that?
Please. Okay.
Give me a call.
Appreciate that.
I know you had your hands full with this dashboard, but I would like maybe the next meeting that you comment or fill us in on the property that we're looking at.
Yes. In fact, I did.
Yeah.
I actually ran into the realtor going into Kroger's today. And I said, we needed to get appointment to do a walkthrough and everything.
Yeah. So get that.
Right.
But this thing popped up and.
Yep. Cindy?
Um, huh. There was something that.
The recount.
The recount. Yeah, the recount. The recount will be taking place.
Yeah.
Yeah, the recount will be taking place on Thursday. And the whole point of the recount was primarily because there was such a large number of ballots cast, not just in Clay Township, but across the state of Michigan, that did not have anybody vote for the president. And they found that they thought that maybe our equipment wasn't working correctly. I don't maybe see that as being impossible that that many people didn't vote for the president. We're going to find out because we have to recount them all by hand.
How much is that going to cost?
That's going to cost some bucks. More than the $125 or $25 a precinct they'll be paying to have them recounted. And that will be a taxpayer's expense, of course. So St. Clair County is paying the workers to recount. But eventually, you know, it all comes from our pocket. So. One, two, three.
Three and a half.
Can I help you with that? Black magic marker.
Right. So it's going to be interesting. I'm actually looking forward to it. Just see exactly how the process goes. Figure you might as well embrace it since it's going to happen and learn something from it. So.
Was that just a state issue or was that?
State issue. Three states.
Really?
Yeah. And actually, I've been talking to a couple of the state legislatures. They are within the state law of doing this. And they, they're actually looking at amending the state law to kind of tighten it up somewhat. Because the person who initiated it only got 5% of the vote and there's no way that she's going to become, you know, get 16 of our delegates because of it. So.
Kind of ironic, three states that have been chosen.
Yeah, well, because their law allows it. I can't remember, Pennsylvania?
Wisconsin.
Minnesota. Was it Minnesota?
Michigan.
In Michigan. So.
Is it Wisconsin?
Okay.
Wisconsin, yeah.
So. Yes.
And I also will say our audit, preliminary review was very, very nice to see, which, you know, not only did I work hard to make sure that we didn't have any of those deficiencies for this audit, but our entire front office staff as well.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody's kicked in, done their part, done their part of their internal control and things are going good. Takes a little bit more time in our day, but that's what needed to happen. So doing good.
Sandy, how we doing down there?
I'm doing great.
Good.
I did attend the Christmas in the park this weekend and Elginak School Choir did a great job and I wanted to thank them. Pearl Beach Lions did a great job putting it together.
Yep.
And Tom Watkins did a good job with the photography.
Did you get your pictures taken?
I did.
Good for you.
Brought the little one out for Christmas pictures.
Awesome.
He did a great job. He was wonderful with him.
Yeah. Chris?
Mr. Bryson, I want to thank you for taking us on a tour last week.
Oh, good.
It was a pleasure to speak and meet with Chief Coach, Chief DuPage, and John DeBoer from the Water Department. It was nice to see the internal workings of the three divisions and to boost my education and knowledge about some of our inner workings in the township equally.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to set, set a tour because I got to even get Cindy in there into the Elginak Water Plant and a couple other things, too.
I'll go, too.
Okay, you can go, too. Because we do have some, some things that are going to pop up on our water plant and our wastewater treatment plant.
I'll pass on that one.
Come on. I'll give you some nose plugs. It's not that bad. Yeah, in fact, I do have a meeting coming up on our budget for our wastewater treatment plant coming up. There's no, I have a preliminary. There's no, no big surprises in it. And I don't know if you guys realize, but our wastewater treatment plant, we share it with the city of Elginak and IRA. We're about 35% owners of it. IRA is 35% and Elginak's 30%. And we share the costs accordingly. The county, we pay the county to run, run it, manage it for us. They've been doing a pretty good job, I must say, over the years. So. So we'll set something on that. Trying to think, I, yeah, this, this account or our auders, we met with them today and I'm ecstatic over that. Like I say, I mean, it was kind of an emotional thing for me two years ago. And like I say, we've had at least a dozen of fish or weaknesses in our accounting system at the township, going back into the 80s. This document was five pages long in every audit. This is what it is now. It basically says nothing. You don't have any weaknesses.
Here's the, here's the big line right now.
The big line.
We did not identify any deficiencies in internal controls that we consider to be material weaknesses or significant deficiencies.
Yep.
Yes, we're all included.
Yeah.
Good, good job.
So let me tell you.
You guys, you don't need an airboat to go across the river, not even just walk.
No, what we're going to do is, my idea is instead of using an airboat, is a zip line.
There we go.
That'll be fun. We'll use the camera over at the DNR for one end, the zip line across the river. I just want to tell everyone to be safe out there. It's the holiday season, Christmas season. And I know I get that way, too. Everyone's in a rush. But sometimes you got to remind yourself to slow down and just remember the reason for the season.
Shorter or snow will be coming.
And watch texting and driving.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're out, right?
Okay. Thanks for coming.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Got a second?
Support.
Okay, all in favor? Ayes?
Aye.
We're out of here. Thanks for coming, everybody.